The City of Andelia Council meeting for July 18th is now called to order. The first on our agenda will be a moment of reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Will you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Council, you've had the council study session minutes of June the 20th, 2016, and also the council meeting minutes of June the 20th, 2016. Are there any revisions or corrections to be made? Seeing none, they'll stand approved. We have no communications, petitions, and awards this evening, nor do we have any kind of public hearing. And that brings us to the agenda for comments from interested citizens. And if there's someone who would like to make a comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your statements.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Chuck Smith, 825 Old Farm Court, Vandelia. I'm here today representing the Vandelia Bicycle Advisory Committee. We want to invite all Vandelians to participate in the Neighborhood National Night Out, 6:30 to 8:30 on August the 2nd at the Vandelia Rec Center. And we also want to encourage them to bring their children because we will have a bike rodeo. And we want to thank the Vandelia Butler Optimists for donating two 20-inch BMX bikes, which we will be raffling to the participating children in our bike rodeo. We just wanted to teach them some basics which will help make them safer bicyclists out there through our city. We also want to thank the Vandelia Police for providing bicycle helmets for the event. And also, we want to thank Rob and Amber and Officer Nagel of the city staff for helping and coordinating the event. Any questions?
No questions, but I just have a comment. The helmets are, they're a real treat for everyone, and they go fast. And they are, they do have the different sizes for the different age groups of the children, and very successful event. So I'm going to just sort of follow up and say, I hope that people do come out and help me out. It's August the 2nd from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Sports Complex.
6:30 to 8:30, I understand.
Oh, 6:30, 8:30, uh-oh, okay.
That's what Officer Nagel told me.
Okay, well, he should know. Thank you, Chuck, very much.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go on with the city manager's report. And we have no information items, but we do have an action item. Oh, Mr. Cruzey, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. We received a request for a one-year time extension to August 8th of 2017 to complete construction of sidewalks for five lots in Brown School Village subdivision, Section 4.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve the extension of time for Brown School Village, Section 4. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please re-call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers. I'm sorry. Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 5 to 0. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution for the evening, and that is Resolution 16-R-60. Would you please read it by title only?
Yes, ma'am. 16-R-60, a resolution designating certain financial institutions as depositories for active, interim, and inactive funds of the City of Vandelia for the five-year period commencing August 23rd, 2016, authorizing depository agreements with said institutions.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Every five years, the city is required to designate public depositories of the city's funds, and this resolution designates PNC Bank, Fifth Third Bank, Key Bank, and Huntington National Bank again as depositories of the city's funds.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 16-R-60 as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fairst, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve Resolution 16-R-60. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 5 to 0. Resolution 16-R-61, by title only, please.
16-R-61, a resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the purchase and emergency replacement and installation of a new compressor for the Justice Center from Mechanical Systems of Dayton, Inc., in the amount of $12,094.67.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. And in mid-June, one of the compressors at the Justice Center failed. This unit is responsible for cooling the basement and the first floor. Mechanical Systems of Dayton provided us a quote of $12,094 to make emergency repairs. Because the cost of the repairs exceeded $10,000, council authorization of that contract is required. However, there wasn't sufficient time to prepare legislation for council's June 20th meeting. That matter was discussed with council during your study session. Council subsequently adopted a motion at your meeting authorizing that emergency repair. This resolution authorizes the contract with MSD that was previously approved by motion at your June 15th meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 16-R-61.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Vice Mayor Lewis, that we do approve Resolution 16-R-61. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 5 to 0. Resolution 16-R-62, title only.
Thank you.
Excuse me. 16-R-62, a resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the city manager to enter into a renewal software maintenance agreement with Harris Global Software in the amount of $23,899.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Vandelia Police Department has contracted with Harris Computer Corporation since 1999 for a software maintenance of the department's public safety software they utilize for dispatching, police, fire, and EMS, integrated records management, and mobile reporting. This is proprietary software that can only be maintained by Harris. The annual maintenance cost contract for this is $23,899, which is a 5% increase over last year.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve Resolution 16-R-62.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Herbst, and second by Councilwoman Fairst, that we do approve Resolution 16-R-62 as presented. Comments?
Only that the number on the printed resolution is 15-R-62 instead of 16-R.
On which one? The resolution?
Yes. Well, I may be one ahead, Harris. Yes.
Yes, okay.
Just a typographical error.
Typographical error, okay. Well, that won't change, Mr. Schaefer, anything?
Not a thing.
Okay, great. Thank you for mentioning that. If there is no further discussion on this item, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 5, 0. Resolution 16-R-63.
16-R-63, a resolution approving the final plat of the True North Energy Plat.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. True North Energy is requesting a plat of two parcels to create one 1.284-acre lot at the southeast corner of National Road and Helkey Road. The replat will also dedicate 0.222 acres of right-of-way along National Road and Helkey Road. The purpose of this replat is to allow for the redevelopment of this site with a Shell gas station and convenience store.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve Resolution 16-R-63 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman, or, excuse me, Vice Mayor Lewis, and second by Councilman Herbst, that we do approve Resolution 16-R-63. Comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 5, 0. Resolution 16-R-64.
16-R-64, a resolution awarding the bid for the Grossbeck Street Reconstruction Project requested by the Public Works Department to Durst Brothers Excavating at the lowest and best bid price of $395,768.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bids for the reconstruction of Grossbeck Street were opened on July 12th with seven contractors submitting bids. Durst Brothers Excavating did submit the lowest and best bid. The budget for this project is $400,000. The project is funded with a 25% OPWC grant, a 25% OPWC loan, and monies from the water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and our police-fire-street levy fund.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 16-R-64 as noted.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fairst, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve Resolution 16-R-64 as presented. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 5 to 0. Resolution 16-R-65, by title only, please.
16-R-65, a resolution establishing a new fund within the city's budgetary accounts called the Ohio Public Works Commission Fund.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. In order to account for the receipt and disbursement of OPWC grant and loan funds for the Grossbeck Street Reconstruction Project, it is necessary to create the Ohio Public Works Commission Fund. The OPWC funds are required to be segregated and accounted for separately.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 16-R-65.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Councilwoman Fairst, that we do approve Resolution 16-R-65 as presented. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 5 to 0. Resolution 16-R-66.
16-R-66, a resolution declaring the official intent and reasonable expectation of the City of Vandelia on behalf of the State of Ohio, the borrower, to reimburse its stormwater, police, fire, street, CIP, and OPWC funds for the Grossbeck Street Water Sewer and Roadway Project, OPWC project loan control number C-D as in dog, 16-T as in Tom, with the proceeds of tax-exempt debt of the State of Ohio.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, the Grossbeck Street Reconstruction Project is partially funded with the Ohio Public Works Commission grant and loan. This resolution certifies to the Ohio Public Works Commission that the reimbursement we receive from OPWC will be reimbursed back to the appropriate stormwater and police-fire-street levy funds.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve Resolution 16-R-66 as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilwoman Blakeslee, that we do approve Resolution 16-R-66 as presented. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 5 to 0. Resolution 16-R-67, by title only, please.
16-R-67, a resolution awarding the bid for the Airport Access Road Bridge resurfacing and repairs requested by the Public Works Department to broom ball construction at the lowest and best bid price of $245,224.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Okay. So the city received two bids on July 12th for repairs to the Airport Access Road Southbound Bridge Deck. The budget for the project is $280,000 for design and construction. Again, broom ball construction did submit the lowest bid of $245,224.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we table Resolution 16-R-67 to our next meeting for further discussion.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Herbst, second by Councilwoman Fairst, that we table Resolution 16-R-67. Are there any comments?
Is that still going to give us enough time to get the project in if we delay it to mid-August?
I...
I thought we were talking August 1st, if we're not very...
I think that we can call a council meeting.
Wouldn't be our next meeting. Our next meeting would be August 15th.
Yeah, so you would just... Did you say it, our next council meeting?
I just said our next meeting.
Whatever that may be.
Yeah, he just said that.
Very well. I just didn't want us to go too far.
Right.
Very good.
Does everybody... Okay.
We need a roll call.
Any comments or other questions or whatever about this? Would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 5 to 0 to table Resolution 16-R-67. That brings us to our ordinances for the evening, and these are first readings, and that's ordinance 16-21, by title only.
Yes, ma'am. 16-21, an ordinance approving a major amendment to the planned unit development for the property located at 20 Francis Lane and owned by Sherri Rhodey in the RSF 4 district with a PUD overlay regarding rear setback.
Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, so the owner is requesting a PUD major amendment to allow a 12-foot patio cover to be placed over on the rear of the home. The home currently sits 17 feet off the rear property line, 2 feet greater than the minimum rear yard setback of 15 feet. Additionally, the zoning code permits canopies and other architectural pertinences to project not more than 3 feet into the required rear yard. Therefore, this proposed 12-foot patio cover would extend 7 feet further into the required yard than permitted. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at its May 24th meeting and unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you. I do know that there are some individuals in our audience for different variances, I do believe. And so if there is someone, and the variance is here at this particular time, and we're voting on it, if you would like to say anything, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and your statement, and that would be fine.
I'm Sherri Rhodey, the owner of the property. And the property adjacent to the rear of my property is owned by our Homeowners Association, and they have approved this. Their trustees have approved it, as well as the Architectural Committee. The property cannot be built on, it's topographically an incline, and so nothing will be built back there. So my property would not be, or this addition would not be affected by that.
Thank you. Do I have a... Do I ask, no, do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move we approve ordinance, was it 16-21? In its first reading?
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, and second by Councilwoman Herbst, that we do approve ordinance 16-21 in its first reading. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Or, excuse me, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 5 to 0. Ordinance 16-22.
16-22, an ordinance approving a major amendment to the planned unit development for the property located at 212 West National Road and owned by Denise Weinmiller in the Office Service District with a PUD overlay to allow the addition of an accessory structure.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, Denise Weinmiller is requesting approval to place a 10-foot by 12-foot storage shed in the front yard at 212 West National Road. This property is located in the Office Service PUD, which only permits accessory structures to be located in either the side yard or the rear yard. However, the property in question is a flag lot, therefore, the front yard of this lot is actually adjacent to the rear yard of other lots along National Road. The storage shed is proposed to be located 5 feet from the east lot line and 10 feet from the north lot line. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at its May 24th meeting and unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you. Is there someone that would like to speak to ordinance 16-22? Seeing none, may I have a motion, please?
Your Honor, I'll move we approve ordinance 16-22 in its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve ordinance 16-22. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 5 to 0. Ordinance 16-23, by title only, please.
Yes, ma'am. 16-23, an ordinance approving a major amendment to the planned unit development for the enclave at the Falls regarding the timing of building certain structures.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, when the PUD for the enclave at the Falls was approved back in 2013, it was specified that buildings 7 and 8 would not be constructed until lots 1 through 6 had been sold. And the applicant is now requesting permission to construct buildings 7 and 8 without restriction. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at their May 24th meeting and unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to make comment about ordinance 16-23?
Hi, Tom Peebles, excuse me, 4400 Willow Creek Circle, Burbank, Ohio. I originally promised the adjoining landowner that I would do those two buildings last, and since then, he has sold his property and moved, so I would like to have that amended and changed so that we can build on them anytime.
Okay. Any question that a council has? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance 16-23 as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Councilwoman Fairst, that we do approve ordinance 16-23 in its first reading. Anybody? Comment? Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 5 to 0. Ordinance 16-24.
16-24, an ordinance to adopt and implement the procedures under Chapter 5722 of the Ohio Revised Code to facilitate reutilization of nonproductive land situated within the City of Vandelia, Ohio, and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Montgomery County Land Reutilization Corporation regarding such land.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, the purpose of the land bank is to facilitate the reclamation, rehabilitation, and reutilization of vacant abandoned, tax-foreclosed, or other real property rent throughout the county.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve ordinance 16-24 in its first reading.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Herbst, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve ordinance 16-24 in its first reading. Comments?
I like, yeah, I think it's a great tool in our toolbox. As my favorite saying goes, to give us additional opportunity to do just what it's talked about, revitalization, reutilization, as are big words. Barely got them out, to be able to take some of those properties and make them better. Give us the...
Anyone else? Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 5, 0. We have some ordinances in their second reading, and the first one this evening is 16-16, by title only, please.
16-16, an ordinance approving a major amendment for the property located at 337 East National Road and owned by Pebble Hill Associates in the downtown business district with a PUD overlay.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, this ordinance involves the Pizza Hut restaurant. The current structure is considered legal nonconforming because it has a front setback of 31.7 feet, where 15 feet is the maximum permitted. The zoning code prohibits the structural alteration of a nonconforming building or structure without being brought into compliance. The applicant is requesting a waiver from this prohibition rather than putting an addition onto the front of the building to bring it into conformance. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at its May 10th meeting and recommended approval subject to two conditions. First is that a separate parking lot revision plan be submitted to staff, and two, that landscaping be provided around the three sides of the new patio.
Thank you. I do know that there's someone here representing this ordinance, 16-16, if you'd like to make a comment, fine, you don't have to. Okay, great, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve ordinance 16-16 with the comments from the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve ordinance 16-16 in its second reading. Any comments? Roll call, please.
We have to have a public hearing.
Oh, gee. It's right here. I am so sorry, folks. I am so sorry.
Sorry, ma'am.
Yeah, I opened it up to anybody that was here representing, but failed to do the public hearing. I do apologize. Since this is an ordinance in its second reading, we need to do a public hearing, so I'm opening up a public hearing, which means that if there's anyone here that would like to speak to this ordinance, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and your comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have to go through with a different motion?[1591.21] Mr. Schaefer? Do we have to go through and do the motion again?
No, it's already been read. So as you're saying, you don't have to do a- you don't have to to-
I don't have to open it up because we- I skipped the public hearing?
No, I think you're okay.
Okay, all right. So we still have Vice Mayor Lewis and Councilman Blakeslee, who made the motion to approve ordinance sixteen dash sixteen. Okay. Any comments from council members?
Yes.
Just that the- it would be for the public to know that they agreed to do a patio out front that brought them into closer compliance to what the ultimate goal of the planning was, is, so that will be very nice when that's finished. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries five, zero. Ordinance sixteen dash seventeen.
Sixteen seventeen. An ordinance approving a major amendment to the planned unit development for the property located at four-ten West Alkaline Springs Road and owned by Bill Matthews and the RSF four district with a PUD overlay.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. This request is to allow the replacement of an existing twenty-four-inch-high fence in Zone A with a forty-eight-inch-high fence. The zoning code restricts the height of fences in residential districts to a maximum of forty-two inches within Zone A, which is the area between the street right-of-way and fifteen feet behind the front of the building. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at its May twenty-fourth meeting and unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you. And since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I am opening up a public hearing, so if there's anyone who would like to make comment about ordinance sixteen dash seventeen, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve ordinance sixteen seventeen in its second reading.
Second. It's been moved by Council- or Vice Mayor Lewis and second by Councilwoman Fairst, that we do approve ordinance sixteen dash seventeen in its second reading. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries five, zero. Ordinance sixteen dash eighteen.
Sixteen dash eighteen. An ordinance approving a major amendment for a freestanding sign for the property located at two-zero-six South Brown School Road and owned by Robert and Cynthia Mueller in the Office Residential Zoning District with a PUD overlay.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. This request is to allow the installation of a twenty-five-square-foot, six-foot-high pole-mounted sign. The property is located in the Office Residential District with a PUD overlay. The sign code permits up to thirty-five square feet of sign area for a multi-tenant facility. However, all freestanding signs are required to be constructed as monument signs with the base of exposed brick or stone. Because this property is located within the PUD overlay district, the installation of the sign and the variance to allow a pole-mounted sign requires Planning Commission review and council approval. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at its May tenth meeting and unanimously voted to recommend denial of the PUD major amendment.
Thank you. Once again, since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I will open up a public hearing, and if there's anyone here who would like to make comment about this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor, I'll move that we deny ordinance sixteen eighteen in its second reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Herbst, so that we do- that we deny ordinance sixteen dash eighteen in its second reading. Comments from anyone? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries five, zero. This evening, we have two emergency ordinances, and the first one is ordinance sixteen dash nineteen.
Sixteen dash nineteen. An ordinance to revise appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Andelia, Montgomery County, Ohio, during the calendar year ending December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, and amending ordinance fifteen twenty-one and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. And this ordinance would amend twenty sixteen appropriations as follows: in the general fund, an additional twenty-eight thousand fifty dollars; in the street fund, an additional six thousand four hundred fifty dollars; in the soccer recreation fund, an additional nine thousand three hundred fifty dollars; in the stormwater fund, a reduction of six thousand three hundred fifty dollars; in the employee retirement reserve fund, an additional thirty-nine thousand four hundred dollars; in the water fund, a reduction of thirty-one thousand six hundred sixty dollars; in the sewer fund, an additional thirty-two thousand nine hundred dollars; in the police-fire-street fund, a reduction of sixty-five thousand dollars; and in the Ohio Public Works Commission Fund, an additional seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars. I would also remind council that because this is an emergency ordinance, five affirmative votes of council are necessary to pass.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, we do have a public hearing, which I'm opening now, so if there's anyone in our audience who would like to make comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the records, and then your comment. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance sixteen dash nineteen as an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fairst, second by Vice Mayor Lewis, that we do approve emergency ordinance sixteen dash nineteen. Any comments or questions from anyone? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries five, zero. The second emergency ordinance is sixteen dash twenty.
Sixteen dash twenty. An ordinance authorizing a temporary advance and reimbursement between various funds of the city for expenses relating to the Grossbeck Reconstruction Project, together with all related appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance authorizes the advance of seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars from the general fund to the Ohio Public Works Commission Fund for the Grossbeck Street Reconstruction Project. The general fund will be reimbursed once the monies have been received from Ohio Public Works Commission, again, as an emergency ordinance, five affirmative votes of council are necessary.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open a public hearing, so if there's anyone here who would like to make comment about this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll move that we approve the emergency ordinance sixteen dash twenty.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Herbst, second by Councilwoman Fairst, that we approve emergency ordinance sixteen dash twenty. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries five, zero. From the reports of our boards and commissions, we have a variance request at nine forty-five South Brown School Road. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Veolia Water Technologies is requesting a variance to allow an outdoor storage yard within the required rear yard setback. The I-one industrial district in which this property is located requires a minimum rear yard setback of fifty feet. The zoning code prohibits outdoor storage yards from being located in any required yard. Veolia is proposing to locate its outdoor storage yard twenty feet into the required rear yard. The BZA reviewed this variance request at its June eighth meeting and unanimously voted to recommend denial of this variance.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we deny the variance request at nine forty-five South Brown School Road.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we deny the variance request at nine forty-five South Brown School Road, the setback. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion to deny the variance request is passed five to zero. The next variance request is the conditional use at nine forty-five South Brown School Road. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Veolia Water Technologies is also requesting conditional use approval for the outdoor storage of materials. The applicant has already installed, again, the gravel pad and commenced with the outdoor storage of materials. The BZA reviewed this request for conditional use approval on June fourteenth and recommended approval subject to the following conditions: one, that a separate fence permit be required; two, that if the storage area is ever used for motor vehicles or becomes a designated parking area, that it be immediately removed and replaced with hardened paved surface; three, that the storage area be screened with an eight-foot shingle link fence with appropriate windscreen; four, that deflighting ever is provided to the site, that it be approved by staff; and five, that the conditional use will terminate, and all material will have to be removed if the tenant ever vacates the property.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve the conditional use subject to the comments made at nine forty-five South Brown School Road.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve the variance at nine forty-five South Brown School Road for their conditional use. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please?
All the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion passes five to zero. Variance request at five forty-three Poplar Grove, fence variance. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, the owner is requesting a variance to allow a six-foot-high vinyl privacy fence in Zone A. As we talked earlier, the zoning code restricts the height of fences in residential districts to a maximum forty-two inches within Zone A, which is the area between the street right-of-way and fifteen feet behind the front of the building. The applicant is requesting the placement of a six-foot-high fence at two locations. One is along the east side of the lot, along an embankment for a span of about fifty-six feet, and the second location is off of the front of the house for a span of ten feet. The BZA reviewed this request at its July, or I'm sorry, its June eighth meeting and unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you. I do know that the applicant is here, and did you want to make a statement? We still need your name and address for our records.
Good evening. I'm Robin Boback, five forty-three Poplar Grove. My house is located on a one-point-three-acre lot in the southeast corner back of the lot, and so the majority of my lot is to the front and to the side, and the fence along the embankment is a safety precaution, and then the one in the front of the house is kind of protecting the side yard, which is really my backyard. So I would appreciate your approval, and thank you for considerate- your consideration.
Thank you, and I believe that all of us were, saw the pictures and so forth, to recognize that the- it's a different, different kind of yard.
Yes, it's at the back of a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
The fence is almost horizontal.
Very nice. It's very nice. Do I have a motion?
Make a-
No.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the variance request at five forty-three Poplar Grove.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Herbst and second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve the variance for a fence at five forty-three Poplar Grove. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries five, zero. Council, you have had an opportunity to review the Goth Advisory Board minutes of May sixteen, two thousand sixteen, the Planning Commission meeting minutes of June twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, public art in Andelia minutes of May seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, and the Andelia Cultural Arts Committee minutes of May seventeenth, two thousand sixteen. Any comments about those? Seeing none, I will continue with the bill listing for June two thousand sixteen was in the amount of three million, eight hundred, thirty-one thousand, four hundred, eighty-nine dollars and ten cents. And with that, we'll go to council comments, beginning with Mr. Schaefer.
I have no other comments except that I think that the city's pursuit of the county reutilization program can be a real benefit for you. I know your neighbor to the east, Huber Heights, has found it to be quite a positive program, helping clean up its city to a degree, and has generated a lot of interest, and I'm sure it'll do the same here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.